I think we are at seven o'clock. Oh, Middlebury's special town meeting will come to order. The legal voters of the town of Middlebury and the county of Addison, the state of Vermont, are hereby warned and notified to meet at the large conference room in Middlebury Town Offices, 77 Main Street in Middlebury, with access via video conference also available on Monday, September 30th, 2024, at 7:00 PM from informational meeting on Article One. And on Tuesday, October 1st, from 7:00 AM through 7:00 PM at the Town Offices, 77 Main Street in Middlebury, to vote by Australian ballot on Article One as provided by 24 VSA, 1061-2, and the Middlebury Town Charter. Welcome, everybody. This is an informational-only town meeting, so no action will be taken on the article. Please look for the meeting sign-in sheet. It's on this little table over here if you haven't already. If you wish to participate, participate. Please raise your hand here in the room or raise your Zoom hand online and wait for me to call on you. Once recognized, please remember to state your name for the record. If you forget, I will be asking you again. First off, a little housekeeping. Is there any objection to Kathleen Ramsey, who is not a resident, to participate this evening?
No objection.
Hearing no objection, she is welcome to participate. Yay! If there are any other non-Middlebury residents here this evening that want to participate, just give a heads up before you wish to speak, because I have to ask permission again. All right, Article One. Shall the legal voters of the town of Middlebury approve the current deed of easement agreement as approved by the Middlebury Select Board at their meeting of June 25th, 2024, and convey to Vermont Gas Systems a land easement to install a gas service to St. Stephen's Episcopal Church? That is the question for tomorrow and for the discussion this evening. The town doesn't have anything to present, so I'm going to go to Ross Conrad to speak first, since he is the initiator of the petition. You can come up to the front house.
Good evening, Ross Conrad. That's me.
Thank you.
Would it be possible to put up the map of the proposed easement route? So everyone can see what we're talking about. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of misinformation bantered about regarding this vote, which is unfortunate. For example, some people are saying it's like really no other options or something like that, which is not at all true. There's all kinds of various options, from heat pumps, which have advanced so far now that they can actually work in large spaces, to wood heat, to thermal, geothermal systems. And so the idea that fossil fuels are the only option is just false. Another thing that's often quoted is that it's the gas is going to cut down on the church's greenhouse gas emissions. Unfortunately, that's not true. The science has quite clearly debunked that. I mean, it is true if you ignore all the leaks at the fracking wells and during the pipes that transport the methane and even leaks at the final, sometimes at the church. But if you, you know, if you only look at the burner tip, yes, there's less carbon emitted than for oil, for example. But when you consider the whole kind of life cycle, fine, the science is quite clear that gas is just as bad as coal, sometimes worse. I mean, it's really just an environmental disaster, quite frankly. But the fossil fuel companies have been very good at spreading propaganda and convincing people of otherwise. Another piece of misinformation is that, well, you know, if the town wants the company to pay for an easement, they might not choose to install it, which, you know, technically is true, but it wouldn't be a very wise business decision since they're guaranteed a profit. So it doesn't matter what it's going to cost them, quite frankly. They know they'll make money, and it's a certain amount that they'll make, guaranteed, no matter what the cost. There's also this idea that there's a lack of precedent. Select Board has never asked the gas company to pay for or any utility to pay for an easement in the past. Of course, in the past, we didn't have the situation we do today with the climate, the unraveling, and just the destabilization that's causing all kinds of storms and heat waves and floods and crop failures and tropical diseases and migrants. I mean, things are getting really bad, and fossil fuel companies, we know, are the leading cause of this. And so to have a situation where you can't change precedent when you're dealing with some situation like this, where a fossil fuel company is causing all these problems, still wants to get basically subsidized by the town's taxpayers by having fees waived, whatever. Quite frankly, if we can't break precedent when it's called for, then we've got far bigger problems than we think we do. Another piece of information or argument that's going around is that, you know, we need to treat all utilities the same. And if we give Vermont Gas a free easement, then we have to give all utilities a free easement. As far as I can tell, there's no laws or regulations that require that at all. It's totally up to the town to negotiate whatever they see fit to be best for the community. Another one is that taxes that the gas company pays is so high, more than covers, you know, the cost of an easement, and so it's no use and doesn't make sense to charge them. The reality is, of course, that Vermont Gas gets to depreciate their fossil fuel infrastructure in town, which is what their taxes are based on. And so as a result, over 30 years, while everyone else's taxes tend to go up, their taxes tend to go down, because they're depreciating the value and they're paying taxes on the value of their pipe. And so they get a sweetheart deal when it comes to taxes, and in my opinion, they don't really need to be given free use of town property through the middle of the town green as well. Another argument that's been going around is that the cost to hold this vote tomorrow is not worth it, because it's going to be more than the value of the easement, which is not true at all. We're able to hold the vote right outside the door here in the lobby of the municipal building, and so the town clerk doesn't have to close the office to hold the vote. It's quite inexpensive. In fact, the town could even save more money by holding it in conjunction with the vote that's going already planned for November, but they chose to have it tomorrow, October 1st, instead. But even with the extra cost, it's still not anywhere near what I would say the value of an easement would be. One of the few arguments that's actually legitimate is that to deny the easement would be anti-business and bad for the economy, because, you know, the reality is, some people can save money when they switch to a fuel such as gas. And also, there is lots of economic activity created when there is storms that damage people's homes and businesses, wipe out roads and bridges, when people get sick from tropical diseases. And so while there's a lot of economic activity there, it's not, most people would say, not really the kind of economic activity that we really want more of in our community. So my hope tomorrow is that everybody will vote, so please don't forget to vote, everybody. And should the article be rejected by the voters, then the Select Board will have a chance to renegotiate with Vermont Gas, so that the church can get their gas, but the town can get paid fair market value for the use of the town's property. Probably should also ask them to pay for any other expenses that the town incurs by giving them the easement, whether it's lawyer fees or an assessor fee or replacing trees that might have to be removed from the town green, whatever that is. And for the Select Board, I'm sorry, there's only apparently two of you here this evening or representatives, but thank you for you guys for coming, Heather and Izzy. One thing to think about is the Select Board is, there's this idea anyway, this concept, that a Select Board is supposed to represent everybody in town, not just a subgroup of the community. And in town, you've got, with this issue, there's like two extremes. There's the one extreme that says, you know, fossil fuels are potentially going to destroy all we know and love, and we don't need it, we don't want it, and it shouldn't be here. We don't want Vermont Gas here. No one should be using gas. We should be using, you know, renewable energies. That's one extreme. The other extreme is open arms to Vermont Gas, happy to have them, as many people that want gas should be able to sign up, we should help cover their costs. That's kind of the other extreme, which happens to be the position the Select Board has taken. I would suggest that if you really wanted to represent all voters and citizens in town, you would find a middle ground. You don't take one extreme or the other, but you find somewhere in the middle. And what I'm suggesting here is that a middle ground might be, you allow the gas company to do business in town and hook people up, but you have them simply pay their fair share and for doing business in town, such as paying for an easement through the town green. So I'm getting the notice that my time's about up, so thank you, Ms. Moderator, for your patience.
Thank you, Ross. Is there someone in the room who would like to speak or ask questions? Please don't forget to state your name for the record, please.
Hi, Ellen Cronin, South Street. I was wondering, is it possible to put up the easement from the June 25th meeting?
The easement itself or the picture, the map?
No, not the map.
Okay.
Because was a document created?
Yeah.
For that easement? I was wondering if it was possible to put that up.
We're working on it. Would you like to say something beforehand, or do you want to wait?
Let me see. I'll have to look forward.
It might take a moment, that's why.
Yeah.
Just trying to be careful.
And I guess part of what I'm wondering about the easement, if it discussed any of the details, or it was just a very basic document that said an easement is offered for a certain area.
Was it boilerplate, or was it?
I think it is the same easement we used in every, at least the one prior. It's the same easement we used.
Okay.
It does have some, it does have some specific language in it that I think we requested.
The answer was that it's the same easement, basic language that's been used with Vermont Gas before for previous easements, some minor language differences, but basically the same one.
So, and that easement language includes reference to the map, 10 feet either side of that line, and also a caveat that it would, the gas line would have to be removed or relocated if needed for a future town project.
Okay. And that's typical?
Yeah.
In gas easements that have been done previously by the town?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Are you going to be able to bring it up?
It would take me a second. I'll have to go back to the.
Or, I guess if that wasn't possible, would it be possible to make it available during voting?
Yeah.
That, I mean, I think that would be helpful.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It was the June, what was the?
June 25th?
June 25th. There were changes made out of that.
Do you know how to access the packet online? Do you know how to access the Select Board packets? I'm just double checking that it's there.
Is there someone else from the audience who would like to speak? I'll get to the computer in a moment, let Kathleen do her.
The easement deed is in the June 25th packet. The Select Board, a copy of it is in there.
Okay.
John, and?
Could Nancy and I come forward?
One at a time would be better. If you both like to sit there, that's fine. I just don't want to, you have to sort of let one person at a time go. Sorry.
John Tenny. I serve as construction manager, serving the church through drainage projects, and this happened to come into the middle of it. So wanted to note here that in the decade in which natural gas has been available to the town of Middlebury, many tax-supported properties have taken the opportunity to convert to natural gas for higher efficiency and lower costs. A partial list of those, and these are just public properties. Porter Hospital, Mary Hogan Schools, MUMS, M U H S, Hannaford Career Center, Middlebury Police Station, Middlebury Rescue, the sewage pumping stations in Middlebury, and Middlebury Housing Associates, Evergreen Housing. The curious thing about this is, for all of these public properties, I have not noted any protests or objections being raised over the service connections, and perhaps that is because taxpayers are reaping the benefits of lower tax bills as a result, as these properties are supported by taxes, and any reduction in costs are to taxpayers' benefits. Other significant natural gas customers, Middlebury College, Middlebury Congregational Church, St. Mary's Church, National Bank of Middlebury, Exchange Street, and industrial park businesses, which wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to keep in the town if they did not have this natural gas service. St. Stephen's is seeking this gas extension because it has failing heating systems at this point, aging out, and it's time to upgrade them. The natural gas use would offer a savings in dollars of over $10,000 a year and an annual carbon reduction of over 30,000 pounds of CO2 per year. As far as the question of fees, tariffs, taxes, so forth, there's been a lot of discussion of how the gas company should pay a fee, but there's no recognition of what the gas company already pays. The gas company, in fact, pays over $400,000 a year to Middlebury in property taxes for its infrastructure, and it is not declining by depreciation because of new rules in the state, which value the infrastructure on the basis of replacement value. So those fees will continue to hold steady and go up going forward. So we would look at these things and say, it's somewhat disingenuous to say that the gas company is not serving the town well, or that this one case stands out as something that needs to be treated differently than others throughout the town for easements on natural gas, when in fact, those things that benefited taxpayers are not being questioned. So I would urge all to support the article and continue to provide the service to the church. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Nancy, how about if you speak, and then we'll see if anybody online has a question.
And to note, Susan, that I did find that easement deed in the packet of June 25th, and I can bring it up on the screen if needed, but we'll make sure it's available for tomorrow.
Great. Thank you, Kathleen.
Hi, Nancy Malcolm, and I am a member of St. Stephen's. As John said, we have a failing heating system at this moment, which is an oil situation. But we'd like to also note that we have invested $50,000 in an acorn array, solar array, so, which has certainly helped us out in that regard and in our energy use regard. We do have heat pumps where it is feasible to have them at this point. We are, we, I'd like to also comment that we looked into things like, or we talked about heat, heating with wood, with pellets, and we know, we spoke with the Unitarian Church, which is a new structure. They tried that, and it didn't work, and they're using LP. So that's just a good thing to know. Also, geothermal, we do not own any of the land. The town gifted the space that St. Stephen's is on 200 years ago, and so we do not own any land around there. So it would be asking an awful lot for geothermal, plus it's so costly to put in at this point for something our size. We feel that all utilities should be treated alike, and in most towns, having looked at different easement or arrangements in that regard, it is, it is not, they do not single out different utilities. So that's just, it's just the way it has been around. And I, it's interesting, one of the things that people have come up to me and asked is, it just seems odd that, you know, that the Select Board has come up, they had a very good discussion. There was a lot of, a lot of differing views on things. They came up with this, and they've done it in the past, and at the same time, several people have spoken up and said, we're kind of sick of this, that, you know, first of all, we had the gas piece, and then it just, it keeps coming up and keeps coming up. And at some point, we have our elected officials, and they have been listening to us, and they have said things. And so we would hope that the voters would certainly support the Select Board on this issue as just a positive thing in that regard. It's just, it's a good way to manage our affairs in this town. So we thank you. We are looking at different options now. We have not settled on natural gas. We are trying to figure out what is the best option out there. So far, we haven't had a lot of things that have risen to the surface, but we are certainly continuing to look, but we would like to have this option to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Kathleen, is there anyone online?
We have Judy Weiger-Groes.
Okay. I'm going to go to online, and then I'll come back to the room. So Judy, you can go ahead.
She's coming in.
Once you're set up, Judy, you're going to need to say your name for the record.
Am I on?
You are, Judy.
It always confuses me. Am I?
You're.
We can hear you.
We can hear you, Judy. Just state your name for the record, please.
Okay. Judy Weiger-Groes. And I have several things. One, Kathleen Jason Crowe, I'm so happy to see you. Susan, oh my God, I'm so happy to see you. You guys are the best.
Okay, little love fest. Keep going, Judy, it's okay. Just keep going.
Okay. Because I probably only have 1.4 seconds, minutes left.
Yep.
Select Board, Heather and Izzy, I'm so happy to see you. I am disappointed that other members of the Select Board are not present.
There are some online, Judy, just so you know.
I'm sorry, what?
There are some participating online, so.
Oh, I'd love to see their faces.
If you could.
Next.
Just get to your, what you want to say.
Can I do it?
Yeah, keep going.
Can I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ross, as always, you're incredibly eloquent. Next. Utilization of fossil-based fuels has been a concern forever. If anybody has not considered it, whether it be a municipality, or a school, or church, it's time to rethink. Family heating systems could be paid for by the money that comes into the town. I think there's a way that the Select Board could negotiate some kind of agreement with the, sorry, whatever the gas company is, to pay for whatever they're losing. Next. The gas company is not serving the town well. It is simply perpetuating our reliance on fossil fuels. Next. In response to Nancy Malcolm's comments, the churches, St. Stephen's churches, with investments are liable. However, continuing to subsidize fossil fuels is not acceptable, and it's time for the town to turn that around. I, number one, will not, will yes, to grab, yikes, sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. To grab the easement, it's not acceptable, and the town needs to realize that. And once again, if you can make this comment, I'm disappointed to not see more Select Board members here, online, tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Judy. Is there someone in the room who would like to speak, in the back?
Victoria DeWinn. My question is looking at this map, and what I've heard previously, that trees will be removed in order to put the gas line in, is that correct?
No.
No? No trees will be taken? Okay, well, that's reassuring. They will be responsible for restoring the green to its previous condition. Okay. Is that the most logical route for it? Is there gas on the, on the?
John, if you could just hold off, and maybe she can ask her questions, and then maybe can call you back up again, is that all right? Because I would like to have the answer, but I want to check with Kathleen first. Okay.
Great. Well, it was mostly the trees I was concerned about.
Trees. And what was your second question?
It's coming off of an existing line already.
Okay. And did you want to answer that question?
Can I? Can I come in?
Yes.
John may know better than I, but I believe due to the tunnel installation. John may know better than I, but I believe due to the tunnel installation that the location coming from the South Pleasant is the most reasonable because of the tunnel installation for the railroad. You can't cross that concrete tunnel. That's why they're proposing coming down from South Pleasant Street. The other thing is typically, I don't know for sure in this case, but typically these lines are installed with direct pouring. So there is not generally a lot of disturbance to the land or the property except where the machine is actually.
Oh, it's horizontal underground?
Yes. I would assume they are, it's typically how it done. Not that they could not do it a different way here, but I would expect that in this case.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add, John, or is that answered?
No.
If you're going to talk, you can come up.
This may help you, Susan, to understand a bit. Remember, as I said first when I came up, that the church is embarking on a major drainage project for the whole surround of the building. That's in the process of getting organized to start soon. And that will involve quite a bit of earthwork immediately around the building. So I don't want you to be confused with that as being a part of it. The gas issue came up along the way during the planning of that project. So that's why the two overlap, but they are not really associated.
Does that add to your question, Victoria? Okay. Thank you. Go forward.
I guess I just wish there were other options than continued use of emitting fuels.
Thank you, Victoria. Susan, does anybody else have?
We do. We have Ann Christie online.
All right, go ahead, Ann.
It'll take her a second to get.
Once you're all set up, Ann, just state your name for the record, please.
She may not have heard that as she's transitioning to panelists.
Oh, okay. Whenever you're ready, Ann, just state your name for the record, please.
Ann, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Ann. If you wish to participate, you can unmute yourself, Ann, and there you go. Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My screen's not acting appropriately, so it was a little bit out of view. So I'll repeat what I've said. And I have a question for Izzy and Lydzy. But first, I just wanted to speak to a couple of comments that I heard from John and Nancy, that I'm speaking right at the moment about what's at hand today and tomorrow, but not to any of the past decisions that were made. And I'm also not basing my decision on the whole, you know, there's a lot of contrariness around fossil fuel versus green. And I'm not basing my question on that at all. What my question is, has to do, I mean, I certainly understand the easement. I mean, it makes some sense to me. But my question to the board is that why, I just don't understand why we're not charging the gas company fair market value for the easement, given that they're not allowed to pass on costs to the consumer and they're guaranteed an approximate 9% return on the infrastructure costs and a 22% recovery on the income tax costs. So they're not losing by laying a pipeline.
All right, Ann, let me see if the board members want to answer that question. They may or may not want to. Okay?
Okay.
Not sure if that's one that you want to answer, and that's okay.
What you're thinking was to not charge fair market value?
I think the board is not interested in changing its past, its past, you know, the way it's voted in the past on this issue, right? Like, we have granted other easements to Vermont Gas across public property, and we've not charged, we've had similar petitions submitted. And I think in both cases of those special town meetings, the town has supported the board's decision. And I don't think we felt we had any reason to treat this one differently than we had in the past.
Thank you, Heather.
Izzy is here too, and she could certainly comment if she wanted as well.
Thank you, Nancy.
No, it's Heather.
It's Heather Sealy.
Heather, yeah, it's late at night for me. I'm sorry.
Izzy, did you want to comment? If not, you can just stay muted. That's fine.
Ann, are you set?
Yeah, I was waiting for Izzy if she wanted to comment.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. All right, I think we'll just let that sit. If Izzy wants to join later, that's fine too. Do you want to speak? Can you come up to the front? State your name, please.
Good evening. I'm Mark Mooney from Middlebury. I know the debate about the right-of-way spreads its tentacles wide because of philosophical differences and that. But that's clearly not the issue that we're dealing with tomorrow. It's a matter of saying that Vermont Gas Company has the right to use the resources of Middlebury, the land, to get to a business. And I understand that. But I think it's a matter of fairness, really. And I appreciate the response about the board saying they did not want to set precedent for this issue. And I understand that that's been the practice of the past. However, when you're dealing with a resource that Middlebury has and has control over, and Vermont Gas is requesting, is that correct, the right to use that resource to get to St. Stevens Church? So in that sense, it seems to me, and I guess I would ask this question, was there ever the Vermont Gas Company or the Middlebury Select Board considering and thinking about negotiating a fee? Was it ever brought up or as this application came forth?
I'm going to turn to Kathleen first on that one.
I would say, just having reviewed the minutes of the June 25th meeting where the select board discussed this at length, they did discuss the possibility of charging a fee and opted not to.
Oh, okay. So it did come to the table?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think that's the beginning of a breakthrough, I guess. But they opted not to because of precedent or because they did not want to do something to Vermont Gas that might cause an issue?
I think Heather already answered that question earlier. It was precedent, correct?
And I would say, one takeaway I had from reviewing those minutes was a comment by Fred Dunnington that the town has allowed Vermont Gas to use its right-of-way to serve other people. There are a lot of people taking advantage of that. And he didn't see any difference between allowing them to access the public land versus the public right-of-way.
Okay. And in that discussion, did Vermont Gas enter into the discussion at any level about what they thought?
We didn't hear directly from Vermont Gas.
So did they initially?
How deep dive really taking in the questions?
Well, did they ever say we would consider presenting and giving a fee for this right-of-way?
I don't, it just sounds like Kathleen is saying, no, that wasn't volunteered.
Okay. So in other words, did they assume, do you think?
I think that's a lot of hearsay.
I know what's dangerous to assume.
I think the question has been answered. Yeah.
So it was a request by Vermont Gas to have access to that right-of-way? And that's how they presented?
That's what was answered earlier. Yes.
Because it would seem that a good, and I understand all of the taxes and fees and so forth that were mentioned earlier, but they're in the business of making a profit. Middlebury, the town, is not. So obviously, right there, there's a potential conflict. So the precedent, I think, is one that bothers me somewhat because the precedent is that we're going to traditionally give rights-of-way to businesses who have an appropriate service they can offer to businesses and municipalities. I just don't quite understand the precedent being the factor that would stop the town of Middlebury of requesting a fee.
Heather, did you want to respond to your?
Can I? Quickly?
Quickly.
So we have had at least two other requests for easements across town property. In both of those requests, the issue has come before the town voters. And in both cases, they supported the select board's decision to grant the easements to Vermont Gas. So I think, at least in my opinion, the history has shown that the voters of Middlebury have supported the board's decision to grant those easements. And we didn't think we should go against the history in this case for, you know, what made this case different from the other previous two. So.
One other question.
I'm going to take somebody else and then I can come back to you later. But that's okay. You've had your time and enough questions. You can speak twice on the issue, so I'm going to give somebody else who hasn't spoken yet a chance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anybody else online who has their hand up still, Kathleen?
No hands online.
No hands online. Anybody else in the room who hasn't had a chance to speak yet? Don't forget your name for the record.
I know it, so it's okay. I'm Linda Horn, and I'm also a member of St. Stevens. And what in Episcopalian speak is the junior warden, which means I try to take care of the building along with a whole bunch of other people. And what I really want people to know is that St. Stevens cares deeply about the environment and the climate. But I don't know if you go to a church or you are involved in a nonprofit, but the budget is a very tight thing. And we have to and want to look at every option on the table. And we have a group that is doing that. But $10,000 in our budget is a really big number. And maybe something else is going to come out just great. But, and we really hope it does, because we would love for the earth to be as respected as it should be. But we don't know exactly how to make that happen.
Thank you, Linda. All right, I'm going to do one last call before I allow Mark to speak for a few more minutes. Go ahead, Mark. You wanted to have another shot at it? Just for a few minutes, please.
I wanted to ask, did Vermont Gas ever offer an in-kind services to the town of Middlebury for the right-of-way? Meaning that they would give the municipal facilities that use their product a break?
In specific to this easement?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to, that looks like a no. Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else online? Anyone else in the room? I'll enter, oop, a few more minutes on something that hasn't been said already. Go ahead. Ross?
Ross Conrad again. I wanted to thank John for his comment about the change in the tax law. I wasn't aware of that, assuming it's accurate. So my question would be, if the town is getting, I think he mentioned something around $400,000, do we know how much the town has spent each of the last few years fixing the washed-out roads?
I'm not sure.
Right off the top of my head, no.
Okay. Hopefully, it's less than the $400,000. So at least they're covering the damage that's being done.
It's a hypothetical answer.
Well, I would just say that no matter how the vote comes out tomorrow, I think the really good thing that has come out of this is that it has, thanks to the 300-plus people that signed the petition to put this on the ballot, it has slowed the process down for St. Stevens. So they've had more time to really consider more thoroughly and more thoughtfully all their options. And that, I think, is when we start to stop just jumping at our first impulses and things that we think we know and start taking more time to really look at things more closely, that's when we can start to solve some of these issues. So I think that's a really positive thing that's come out of this whole thing. So I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So John Tenney's said by Heather Sealy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.